Let me actually look at the agenda.
Supervisor, I move that the board go into closed session to discuss pending litigation, Percy versus Canton Township.
Second.
In favor of the motions presented, say aye. No, we're going to do voice counsel if you want to call as we go around.
Trustee Anthony?
Aye.
Trustee Foster?
Aye.
Trustee Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Clerk Segrist? Aye. Treasurer Slavens?
Aye.
Trustee Snyderman?
Aye.
And Supervisor Williams?
Aye. Okay, we're now in closed session. Could you close the door Greg for us? Thank you. And make sure the cameras are off. Which means healthcare. Would I have a motion to move from closed session into open?
Ooh.
Support.
All in favor of the motion presented, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Saying none, we are now back in open session. Call for a motion to approve the agenda of negotiations. Number eight.
So moved, I'd like to make a motion to add zero A for water billing with our treasurer and zero B a coronavirus resolution to the agenda.
Support.
In favor of the motions presented, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Saying none, motion carries.
Minutes?
We also need a motion to approve a set of minutes from the February 25th, 2020 meeting.
So moved.
In favor of the motion presented, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Seeing those six in the audience at this point, I agree with the motion of the town to say aye. Call for treasurer Slavens to pay the bills.
Mr. Supervisor, I make a motion that we pay the bills.
Support.
In favor of the motions presented, say aye.
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 Closed. Saying none, motion carries. Item G zero, Diane, treasurer Slavens, you've got the floor.
The, Mr. Supervisor, due to the township's partial closing and placing employees off work, and in the interest of not penalizing our residents, I move to waive the strict application of section 7478 of the Township Code of Ordinance entitled Water Billing Water Meters.
Support.
In favor of the motions presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item zero B is in front of us, which is, consider adoption of the resolution of the Canton Township regarding COVID-19.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following resolution of Canton Township regarding COVID-19. Whereas, the novel coronavirus, or COVID-19, is a respiratory disease that can result in serious illness or death that can easily spread from person to person, and whereas COVID-19 has been identified as the cause of an outbreak of respiratory illness with person-to-person spread of the virus, and therefore on January 31, 2020, the United States Department of Health and Human Services Secretary Alex Azar declared a public health emergency, whereas on March 10, 2020, Governor Gretchen Whitmer declared a state of emergency across the state of Michigan with the signage of executive order number 2024. Whereas, on March 13, 2020, President Donald Trump declared a national state of emergency due to the novel coronavirus, and whereas, based on the state of emergency declarations, and in an effort to mitigate the spread of the COVID-19 virus, and in the interest of protecting the public health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Canton Township, now therefore be it resolved, the Township Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton has determined it to close all township facilities to the public for a period of three weeks effective March 13, 2020, at 10:00 PM through April 5, 2020, that during the, this time period, procurement cards for all department directors, deputy directors, Public Safety Police Chad Baugh, Deputy Director of Public Safety Fire Chris Stockline, and Public Works Manager Brad Lear shall be increased to $5,000 in order to provide flexibility for any purchases that are required due to the statewide declaration of an emergency, that the emergency provisions of the purchasing policy may be relied on as well for any needed purchases during this state of emergency, that during this time period, all non-critical personnel, as determined by each department director, shall not be required to report for work, that all full-time employees that did not have paid time off scheduled before April 5, 2020, prior to the close of business on Friday, March 13, 2020, shall return, retain their normal wages and benefits during this time period, that any employee with paid time off scheduled prior to the close of business on Friday, March 13, 2020, shall have until the end of Monday, March 16, 2020, to retract any prior scheduled PTO, provided that any employee who retracts scheduled PTO shall be deemed available for callback, that all employees without scheduled PTO through the time period ending April 5, 2020, shall be subject to callback within 24 hours, advance notice, except in the case of a township emergency, in which case the employees shall be required to report to work, that any employee who decides to take a vacation during the time period ending April 5, 2020, shall notify their division manager or department director and shall be required to use paid time off, that any employee who is considered critical and subject to report to work during the closure, during their normal and customary work hours, shall be compensated for the time worked, at time and one half, and further will be expected to work a minimum of three hours, that any employee called in on an emergency outside of their normal and customary work hours shall be given two hours advance notice to report for work, and shall be compensated in accordance with the requirements of their respective collective bargaining agreements, that all employees called in on a 24-hour, on 24-hours' notice, or on an emergency basis, whether during or after regular and customary work hours, shall be, shall not be paid until the first full paycheck after the township resumes normal operations, that part-time employees will be paid the average number of hours they have worked per week during the pay dates of March 12, 2020, February 27, 2020, and February 13, 2020, paid at the rates, at the rate of their primary position. Part-time employees will not be paid these wages past April 4, 2020, to the extent the shutdown extend beyond that date. Should the township resume with employees during returning to work prior to April 4, 2020, paychecks will only reflect actual hours worked for part-time employees, that full-time exempt employees who are required to work during the township closure shall be entitled to accrue compensatory time as approved by the merit commission, that in the event the state and/or national emergency declarations are withdrawn, the township closure shall be terminated, and all employees shall be ordered to return to work with no less than 24-hours' notice, and that the township board shall meet the week prior to April 5, 2020, to make a determination whether to continue the closure or return township facilities to normal functioning with notification to all employees.
Okay, before we ask for support, this is a little bit unprecedented, just this itself, in itself is very unprecedented. Kristen, is there, there've been a lot of hands involved in creating this resolution. Do you see a change that we need to make before?
Yes, the version that I sent out earlier today in paragraph 12.
Sorry.
Read, that part-time employees who regularly work five or more hours per week.
Yeah, Michael, the document you read from, that's on me. That was printed out yesterday before staff went out, and as we're aware, there have been changes. So, it's only one change to that one section.
I will, if the board is comfortable, I will read the updated section, subparagraph 12, from the resolution. All right, so striking 12 prior, and then supplanting it with, that part-time employees who regularly work five or more hours per week will be paid the average number of hours they have worked per week during the pay dates of March 12, 2020, February 27, 2020, and February 13, 2020, paid at the rate of their primary position. Part-time employees will not be paid these wages past April 4, 2020, to the extent the closure extend beyond that date. Should the township resume with employees returning to work prior to April 4, 2020, paychecks will only reflect actual hours worked for part-time employees.
Okay, could I call for a support?
Second.
Thank you. Kristen, please.
I'm trying to explain why that change was put in. That, that five-hour minimum was added because as Wendy and probably Greg started to go through and look at part-time employees, I think we had a couple that had one hour of time, or I think in one situation Wendy said 0.23 hours within a week.
Right.
So to pay somebody for that really small amount of time is, costs more to process that payroll, so they put the five-hour minimum in just to make it, you know, pay for itself, I guess.
Additional background is, as I'm sure all the trustees are very much aware, for the public to be aware, for the past week and a half, through the leadership of all the directors, Public Safety, on Josh's team, we have Will Hayes, who is our emergency manager, has been doing a phenomenal job tracking the developments of the COVID-19 as it's evolved, I guess is the best way to put it, and essentially what the leadership team's been doing along with the full-time electeds, is meeting daily, understanding what it means, what are the changes, what is the direction coming down from the Center of Disease Control, what is the direction coming down from the president and the, our governor, what does that mean to Canton Township, and how can we, and how should we be implementing things to protect not only the well-being of our residents, but also the safety and health of our employees as well. So there've been a lot of very difficult decisions made, with a lot of focus on what makes the most long-term sense for the community in the short term, and meetings will continue. Now, what did happen was today we did a shift from meeting face-to-face in person, to we're going over to conference calls. So, those who are still involved, supporting, working from home, can still engage with the full conference, conversation with the leadership team. Is it an accurate portrayal, Greg, Jade, Josh, of where we're at and what we've been doing? Michael, Diane, anything to add in terms of how we got here?
No. That's a pretty good, pretty good explanation, yeah. I think Friday morning was when we started the conversations about, you know, moving from kind of monitoring the situation to active, active kind of response, right?
And Will did a wonderful job talking to staff on Monday to let them know this is very serious, and Corinne as well, talking to them about what the process was, so.
Appreciate it. Will's up there, can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
So, the governor did speak of the Open Meetings Act also, and she did say for this emergency they'd allow, like you said, the conference, but we're choosing to do it this way instead, correct? As a board.
So, the information from the governor about Open Meetings Act is not for a public body like this, that was for agencies of state government, and so they are not subject to the, to the OMA to the extent that we currently are, so from what I understand, based on law, we are still obligated to hold public meetings in real time with the public able to attend. So that, that was part of the reason why the supervisor, the treasurer, myself, and the leadership team discussed canceling next week's meeting?
The next, that's what I was going to say.
Sorry.
So right now, the March 24 meeting has been removed from our calendars, and the only reason we will be meeting again as a body is when, the next time we meet, it'll be because we either have a time-bound decision that must be made to keep us in compliance with the law, or we have a funding issue that is not covered and has become an emergency and priority in terms of health and safety, and critical preservation of equipment and facilities, is that the best way to put that, Greg, Jade? So, health and safety, or for example, you know, the, the pool at the summit, the pumps still need to run, they still need to be maintained, if we don't do the basic things there, then we're going to have a higher cost staring us in the face. So right now, March 24 has been canceled, next public meeting of this body will be based on a significant issue that has to, requires our body to make a decision.
Yeah, and I think, you know, one of the things during the presentation to the staff was, each one, we did them in smaller groups, that was kind of predetermined who would come to them, would start off with Supervisor Williams making brief statements, kind of overall about what was going on, followed by Will Hayes to give kind of an update about the situation as it, as it exists in the country and here locally, and then Human Resources Manager Kareem Conley discussing kind of practically what it, what it meant for the employees, yeah, which is all of the things we read in, in that, in that resolution. One of the things that Will Hayes had mentioned, I think is important, you know, because I've heard people say, "Well, we didn't have any confirmed cases in my area, why, why, why go to these lengths," or, I've heard a lot of, you know, a lot of that, and one of the interesting things is he shared a graph, and a very important graph of kind of two, two responses to a, to an epidemic or a pandemic, right? One is to continue on as if nothing is going on, assuming that everything is going to be okay, in which case the number of incidences will spike dramatically, and the other one is a situation where you tend to cancel large events, people begin to distance themselves from each other, self-quarantine if they have come into contact with it, and then that curve, it tends to be more elongated, doesn't, you know, and what's important to note is, is what he had mentioned is, somewhere on that graph is the capacity of our healthcare system, and the reason we go to these lengths, because to some degree it's inevitable that people will get sick, and to some degree it's inevitable this will get spread, and that it will last for a significant amount of time, but one of the important things is that we protect our healthcare system from being overwhelmed. If somebody were to have a normal medical emergency in the middle of a pandemic, they would not have access to the hospital, hospitals themselves would become breeding grounds for this, and people would get sent home, they would get sent home to die, and so, in a sense, what we're all trying to do is ensure that the limited number of beds, test kits, and respirators are left for those people that are actually going to, going to need it, and that we limit the amount of people that are going to need it at the same time.
Summer?
I do have a question. Michael, I do think that was well said, about the part-time employees, so they will not be paid after April 4, is that what this is saying, they won't be paid at all?
That has been telegraphed to the employees, yes, but the decisions being made are day-to-day right now.
Okay.
Hour-to-hour, and what is happening behind the scenes is Wendy, Jade was involved, Josh, Greg, every, all the directors been working over the weekend, Kareem behind the scenes, Wendy behind the scenes, and Jade, and Josh probably more so than others, have been putting in, in order, inordinate amount of hours to get the information that we need to make good quality decisions. The direction that was given to Wendy during our one-on-one today was, okay, we've made some decisions, we have some information that we need to get from Greg's group in terms of, for each program we're shutting down, there are those programs that were, you know, very important and crucial to Canton Township, and it's why we are Canton, if we shut them down, there's going to be impacts to cash flow. Is it a positive cash flow impact or a negative cash flow impact? Same thing with some, the Jade's area, it appears at this point that activity is just as strong as ever, and he's going to be shifting now, having people apply for permits and what have you through the mail, and so I think that's going to slow the processes down, and so there will also be some level of revenue impacts there as well. I don't know from Diane's department, how significant the impacts will be. So Wendy's been given the assignment, and it's going to take her several days with her team to analyze and project what we can afford and what the impacts are going to be to our budgets, and then come back to this body and say, "Okay, guys, we have to make a decision because this is not sustainable," right? This, this is going to be a negative impact to cash flow, so we're taking the hit, short-term. We're doing the analysis to see how long we can sustain, and I don't know what that answer is, Wendy will produce that answer for us.
Thank you. When you have that information, can you make sure the board gets it?
Absolutely, without a doubt.
I'll just, I'll say that my deputy and I are in the office every day because we are getting payments, people are paying their water bills, and I encourage people certainly to go online, we have the Dropbox, I'm checking the PO box every day, we're bringing everything in. So we have a revenue stream coming in, hopefully people can pay their, make their water payments, and we also have payments, the township has bills to pay, so we're, you know, still doing our banking, still paying our bills, so there's a lot going on with, and with permits and everything. We have water finals, so I know Brad Lear is going out doing the water finals because the final reads for people who are either moving out of their home or what have you, so there's still a lot of activity going on in the township, even though the windows are closed.
Greg, if you please add.
I just want to reiterate our, let the board know that from the initial feedback that I've received from part-time employees and having discussions with them, that they're extremely appreciative of this measure that you all are considering this evening. There are many of our employees who are part-time lifeguards or building attendants that work one shift a week, that it's, you know, it's a side job to them, but we have many employees, some that have been with us for 20-plus years, that this is their sole income, and this is how they pay the bills and feed their kids and those sorts of things, so they are extremely appreciative, and what they have heard thus far, that they're pleasantly surprised, they honestly did not expect anything, so the fact that you guys are considering this is very, very helpful to them, and they're very appreciative of the support.
And I can share with you that I've been approached by other community leaders that are trying to figure out how they can do what Canton Township is doing, that's real. We're in a unique position financially to do what we're already stating we're going to do. Secondly, it's, health and safety is first priority. The finances, we'll sort that out over time and make the best decisions we possibly can as a team.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, there will be consequences obviously for this, but, but I do think, I was really proud, and I was really proud with the leadership team and the discussion about this, it was abundantly clear pretty early on that our employees, even, you know, especially in our part-time employees, are not just lines on a spreadsheet, that they are seen as an actual integral part of this organization, that they are, you know, that they are a key investment, and, and that, and so I, it was, it was great to see the discussion pretty, pretty quickly that we were in fact going to continue, you know, supporting them throughout this. There are a lot of people, especially those in the service industry right now, that are going to be hit really, really hard by this, and there are people who, who don't have health insurance and who don't have paid sick leave, and who don't have the ability to take any time at all, who work not only paycheck to paycheck, but sometimes night-to-night, tips-to-tips, and this is going to be a very challenging time for them, and I'm just grateful, and I think it's a statement of values, that we aren't putting our employees currently through that. I'm proud.
We encouraged them to go out and, you know, support the small businesses in the community, take advantage of, you know, a little more time with family, maybe a little more time outdoors, but be sensitive to those who don't have the same opportunity that we are providing our employees today, at least through April 5.
I'll say that the governor signed an executive order, I believe it was yesterday, on unemployment insurance, so if there's a way that we can connect our employees to that resource, if we...
Oh, absolutely, yes, that's automatic, if, yes.
... employees and residents.
Yeah.
And so, actually like, and on top of what you said, Michael, it is true, there's a lot of people out there that will not have the means, and it's great to see that our, some of our faith houses and other, and schools are stepping up to feed people also, so that's important also, but one of the, and one of the items here talks about, you know, we're giving extra funds for, shall be increased $5,000 in order to provide flexibility. So Josh, are you finding that we, we've had to use extra resources in our budget for police in terms of what's going on in the community?
At this point, we haven't exceeded anything that's already currently in the budget. We have placed some things into place, Greg and his team stocked up our fuel supplies so that if, if we have issues with fuel pumps, we'll still have gas and diesel fuel to operate. We, early on, we identified how much PPE we had for our first responders, we know we have a limited stock of that, we're working as we speak to try to add, add to that, we need some additional N95 masks and some additional PPE, so we're looking at a purchase that would be, I don't want to say that would be outside of our budget, we have, we have money in the budget to cover that, but we'll see where we end up at the end of the year if we, if this purchase of additional PPE puts us outside of our medical supply, our normal medical supply budget, but that's, that's what we're looking at right now, and it's a matter of whether, whether or not we can even get it, is, is the key issue.
Are you seeing increasing runs to the, some of our facilities, our senior facilities at all, in the last couple of weeks?
No.
But, that's good, a good sign. Thanks.
Go ahead, Michael.
Wendy's not in the room, I think one thing that's important to say is, while we have increased the P cards to $5,000, we will be approving obviously those when we do our regular bill pay, so what we're essentially doing is allowing those key people to make, you know, giving them the discretion they need to make whatever important decisions they want to make, while, because we currently like, I can't put in a purchase order because I approve purchase orders, so there's nobody in the clerk's office that can put in a purchase order, so like, so we're giving everybody the, the ability to, to do what they need to do, and then the board is the final governing body, we will obviously approve the bill pay in April for whatever we occur now, and then Diane and I will always, obviously approve the, the P card expenditures, which we do.
Within our purchasing policy, we have the ability under emergency situations to do what the guys are doing, we've created a manual process for approvals, sign-offs, and then anything that, again, is done under that policy will come back to this body for a final approval, but it'll be in some cases after it happens, not before, according to policy. Any other questions, comments?
Thuro, thank you for all the hard work from everybody.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. I've been in, there's not been an easy time for, for the citizens and for the board to function. I, I'm delighted that the way the, the full-time employees who are here every day have handled the situation, and the township, from my perspective, seems to be running on even keel, I'm sure you guys are working very, very hard to ensure that happens, but some people I talked to at my, my office is closed, by the way.
Sorry, I'm so sorry, John, I heard about that today, later, yeah.
It seems the feedback I get that they, the average citizen doesn't notice any difference in the township's ability to handle requests and pay the bills and get things going, so it's a credit to you all to keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you. All right, that being said, those in favor of the motions presented, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, say none, motion carries. We have a couple other items that were original planned meeting items, if we could please go through those. First item up would be, consider approval of contract extension for roofing consulting services for Canton Leisure Services.
Supervisor, I move to award a three-year contract extension to Roofing Technologies Associate Limited at 38031 Schoolcraft Road in Livonia, Michigan, 48150, for roofing consulting services for the Canton Township facilities.
The staff's been very happy with their performance and would like to renew them. Is there any board questions for, comments for Greg? Say none, those in favor of the motion presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G two, consider award of contract authorization of purchase order to purchase softballs for Canton Sports Center. That stayed on there. Okay, everything else going on, we're...
Supervisor, I move to award a contract and authorize the purchase of no more than 412, is that inch, league footballs from Rawlings Sporting Goods in an amount not to exceed $15,000 from the account number listed for Canton Sports Center operating supplies.
And the decision that Greg's got to be, be making is based on the evolution of what's going on, will we delay the kickoff of the season? We've had some players already reach out to us and say, you know, would probably be okay with them if we did, and I think what a lot of the organizations are doing is they're not straight-up canceling, they're postponing, so that'll be a future decision. Any comments, questions for Greg? Okay, those in favor of the motion as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G three, consider repealing Chapter 10, Article 2, Teen Clubs, Article 3, Amusement Devices and Arcades, Chapter, excuse me, 14, Article 6, Kennels and Five, I'm sorry, Seven, Indoor Pets Boarding Facilities. Boarding Facilities, and Chapter 46, Section 46-5, Fortune Telling and Palmistry of Canton Code of Ordinances and Holding a First Reading of the Ordinance, amending Chapter 18, Section 18-1 to 18-800 for businesses. This is something the Clerk Seeger's been working very hard on for several months.
For those with the board packet, the second motion, I am obviously going to make a change because we did cancel, we are canceling that March 24 meeting, so the second reading of this would be April 7. But, Mr. Supervisor, I move to introduce and hold the first reading of an ordinance that was, that repeals and replaces Chapter 10, Article 2, Team Clubs, Chapter 3, Amusement Devices and Arcades, Chapter 14, Article 6, Kennels, and 7, Indoor Pet Boarding Facilities, Chapter 18, Businesses, and Chapter 46, Sections 46 through 5, Fortune Telling and Palmistry of the Canton Code of Ordinances.
Okay. In terms of additional information, Clerk Seeger's would love to talk to you for days on end on this and what he's been doing behind the scenes to get us to this point, but a lot of good, high-quality meetings with a lot of folks got us to this point. Is there anything additional you'd like to add, Michael?
Outside of the change that we're doing, if you want to see, I know that Trustee Snyder been contacting me on the side, kind of curious what this really meant, like, what are we really doing here? Under the background information, it goes through and lays out in a kind of the spine or the index of what is happening, right? It gives you a kind of an index of all of the ordinances first, as they currently exist. It says repealed ordinances, and then the new structure. So if you walk through that, what we're essentially doing is wiping the slate clean by removing Article 2 and Article 3 of Chapter 10. And Article 2 is going to make its way into the new Chapter 18 ordinance. Article 3 will be gone. There will be no more arcade or amusement device licenses for Canton Township. And that was at the recommendation of Building and Inspection Services, along with ordinance. Chapter 14, Animals, that's my wheelhouse there, Kennels and Indoor Pet Boarding Facilities, because they are both businesses, we are removing them from the Animal Ordinance, Chapter 14, and we are bringing both of them into the Business Ordinance, where they will be regulated under the same policy, procedure, process as the existing businesses. Chapter 18, Junkyards is going to be in Chapter 18. Massage is going to be in Chapter 18. Sexually-oriented businesses will also be in Chapter 18 still. Used car dealers are going to be removed, and that is at the direction and recommendation of Building and Inspection Services, Public Safety, and Ordinance, because they are regulated by more stringent rules from the State of Michigan. Automotive service stations additionally repealed. Gas stations will be obviously regulated by building when they come in for building code, but the licensing is done by the State of Michigan as opposed to the local jurisdiction. Smoking lounges would make their way back into the Chapter 18, and marijuana establishments would also make its way into the new Chapter 18 as well. Chapter 46, the Fortune Telling and Palmistry will be repealed. We had an ordinance banning fortune telling and palm reading, which was decided to be illegal, so we got rid of that. We lack the ability to ban that kind of a business.
The board has been accused of doing those things for years anyway. I think it's probably rational.
Exactly. Now, what's important to note is, anything that was removed is in Chapter 18 under a separate section monitored, so they are still going to be subject to compliance checks. That would be the Township Ordinance, Fire, Building and Inspection Services going out to do compliance checks, making sure that they are still following the rules. There were some updates to some of the ordinances that were a little on the older side to allow for changes to technology. We, the big, the big, the big change here, and as you will all probably remember, the driver to the change was the change to the massage establishment ordinance. We had two hearings in 2019, one where we granted somebody's appeal. I had denied a massage license from somebody who was within 1,000 feet of a daycare. And this board decided, a majority of this board decided to allow her to open and give her a license. Then we saw a variance request from another massage establishment on the same road, who was within 1,000 feet of a school. We did not grant that variance request, but there was a quorum of the board that said that they were comfortable getting rid of the 1,000-foot rule, which was used the first time to grant the license. But we didn't do it the second time, but we said we wanted to change the ordinance. So this is my attempt at changing the ordinance so that we don't have further issues where the board wants a rule changed, we're forced to follow it anyway. So in that instance, so what this means is, the 1,000-foot rule is eliminated from this reading, and that is in the limitations of the massage ordinance. What still is there is the 1,000-foot from a single, from the same use. So two massage establishments cannot be within 1,000 feet of each other, but there is not that stipulation that they be within 1,000 feet of a school, a daycare, a church, and all of that, all of that. What we did add to the ordinance was, A, compliance checks, like we have for the other ones, so that they would be subject to inspection when Public Safety decides to go in and view them. And additionally, we made it more difficult to open one if you had a felony that related to a specific kind of sexual crimes, if you will. Soliciting would be one of them, for example. You are unable to open one, and we made also, for the other forms of criminal charges, we went from a five-year kind of cool-off period to a seven-year cool-off period, and that was at the recommendation of both Municipal Services Director Jade Smith and Public Safety Director Josh Meyer and the supervisor, and I had kind of agreed to that. So that's a good summary of what has changed. It was a lot, but essentially, you have one process now for application, one process for granting the license, one process for revoking the license, one process for denying the license, and one process for appeal, and that is for all businesses. There was not uniformity in the, under the previous ordinances. Now, it's the same process, and we hope it will result in a better customer service for, in better customer service for people who want to open up legitimate businesses in Canton Township and will still give us the tools to hold those that are illegitimate to account.
Any comments, questions?
A lot of good work.
Thorough presentation.
Thank you for being thorough on it.
Henry?
I have one question. We talk about compliance checks in here. It's going to be replaced by compliance checks. Do we have a schedule for compliance checks, or, I mean, normally?
By we, so Public Safety, I imagine, would, it was discussed, there's benefit to the randomness of those, specifically if you think about historically what we've dealt with? Sometimes a schedule or allowing individuals to know would be problematic.
Allowing, am I just wondering?
Yeah, we'll continue to do our fire inspections on a schedule, but the compliance checks of the regulated business will be random, and they'll be random by design so that we can enforce the ordinance as written.
Perfect example would be the massage parlor where the girl was living in the facility. If that was a scheduled event, do you think we'd see evidence of her living there? Absolutely not. It's...
Yeah. Yeah.
One example of many, but any additional questions, comments? Okay. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Any additional comments? Oh, is there a second motion? Sorry.
Oh, there is.
Thank you. Thank you, Diane.
Mr. Supervisor, I further move to table for reconsideration of said ordinance for a meeting to be held on April 7, 2020.
Support.
Favor of the second motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Additional board comment? Additional board comments? Seeing none, call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Favor of the motion as presented, say aye.
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 Carries. We are adjourned.